All right, call to order. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting of June 25th is now called to order. I will first do the roll call. Commissioner Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Raspe?
Here.
Commissioner Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Stump?
Here.
Commissioner Sordi?
Here.
I am here as well, and please note that Chair Thomas is absent this evening. If you would, or if you're able, please stand to join Commissioner Barnett in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tess, if you'll join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, Commissioner. As the Planning Commission conducts tonight's meeting, we encourage active participation by the public. This is essential to democracy and the important work of the Planning Commission. Public input is very much welcomed and always considered, and there are a couple of different ways to participate. Prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items may be submitted to staff, and during the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First, during the verbal communications portion of the meeting, an individual may speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And second, during the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, any member of the public may speak about an agenda item. You will be advised of your time limits at those times. If you do wish to address the commission tonight during verbal communications, please either raise your hand on Zoom or fill out one of the speakers cards and hand those over to staff. They will make sure that I get those to call your name. When you are called to speak, I'm going to ask that you come to the podium and adjust the microphone and speak directly into it. These meetings are recorded, and it also makes sure that we capture all of your important information. You'll have three minutes to speak. So we now begin the verbal communications portion of the meeting. This is where you can come to speak about items not on tonight's agenda. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair. I don't see any hands raised on Zoom.
All right. If none, then we will move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on our consent calendar this evening, and that is the approval of the draft minutes of the June 11th Planning Commission meeting. Before we act, on the consent calendar, are there any requests to have the item removed or any discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent?
Still moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, great. With a motion and a second? We're going to move on quickly tonight. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Great. We'll now move on to our public hearings portion with item number two. This item is to consider a request for approval to demolish an existing single-family residence, construct a new single-family residence, site improvements required a grading permit, and a zone change from O Office to R-18 Single Family Residential with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. Property is located at 14331 Capri Drive, APN 406 32004, architectural and site application S-24-043, and zone change application Z-23-005. This is categorically exempt pursuant to sequel guidelines, section 15303 New Construction, and section 15061 B3 Common Sense Exemption. The property owner is Ravi Kiran, I hope I'm going to say your last name properly, Valam Das. Applicant is Gordon K. Wong, and the project planner is Ryan Safdie. Before we have a staff report, did everybody get a chance to visit the site? Are there any disclosures? Okay, great. Mr. Safdie, you'll be given the report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The applicant tonight is requesting approval of a zone change from Office to Single Family Residential, and demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new two-story residence with site work requiring a grading permit. Zone changes require Town Council approval, and therefore both applications are going before Planning Commission tonight for a recommendation to the Town Council, who will be rendering the final decision. The property is located at the corner of Capri Drive and Vasiona Avenue, and is in a transitional neighborhood with a mixture of commercial and residential uses in the surrounding area. The property is currently zoned Office, but has a general plan designation of low-density residential. The surrounding properties on the west side of Capri Drive all have a low-density residential land use designation, and are all zoned R18 except for this property. As residential is not a permitted use in the Office zone, the application for a new residence necessitates this zone change. As noted in the staff report, staff recommends approval of the zone change as it would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and the general plan land use designation. The existing residence was built in 1940 and was removed from the historic inventory by the HPC in 2023. There's an existing two-story structure with two ADUs on the site that were approved in 1989 and are allowed to remain, and are not being reviewed of this application pursuant to state law. The proposed two-story residence would be of Spanish Mediterranean style and would be approximately 27 feet tall, stucco siding, and clay tile roof. Although the proposed residence would comply with all applicable town standards, the proposed residence would be the tallest and largest in the immediate neighborhood. The town's consulting architect reviewed the proposal and noted that the property is located in an older neighborhood of mostly one-story traditional homes, and the proposed house would be considerably larger than the other homes in the immediate neighborhood as defined by the town's residential design guidelines. Additionally, the consultant recommended nine design changes to simplify the design and improve the project's compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant incorporated seven of the nine recommendations and provided justification for the other two with an exhibit seven of the staff report. In terms of neighborhood compatibility, the residential design guidelines state that the greatest attention will be given to the immediate neighborhood where nearby homeowners are most likely to be confronted with a new house on a daily basis, and where other residents driving by are most likely to see the new structure in the context of nearby homes. The design guidelines contain a diagram to illustrate standard immediate neighborhood definition, which staff uses when creating the neighborhood analysis that you see in tonight's staff report. When looking at the strict definition of the immediate neighborhood, the proposal results in the first two-story home, the largest home by over 1,000 square feet, and the largest FAR in the immediate neighborhood. However, as also noted in the residential design guidelines, lesser consideration can be given for homes located at a greater distance from the project site, and there are several factors in determining an immediate neighborhood when the illustrative diagram might not be applicable, including location and visibility of the buildings. As noted in exhibit seven, the applicant notes that the immediate neighborhood, if expanded by one property on both sides on Vasiona Avenue, the proposed home would no longer be the first two-story, would not be the largest in terms of floor area or FAR. Additionally, there's already an existing two-story structure on the site. If the Planning Commission feels it is appropriate, they can expand the immediate neighborhood further than staff did. However, since staff uses the example diagram for determining the immediate neighborhood, and which properties do include, staff does recommend denial of the Arkensite application due to this neighborhood compatibility. One public comment was received, and that was distributed in yesterday's addendum report. As there are two different recommendations within the staff report for both different application types, you will see two sets of findings prepared for each of those applications. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Stump?
Ryan, sorry to come back and ask this question, probably again after you've talked about neighborhood compatibility and the immediate neighborhood. So as we refer to our residential guidelines, and unfortunately, I'm now referring to a specific page, page 11, that shows a couple of diagrams in there. One with sort of a very just straight-line neighborhood, and another one with a house on a corner. And with the house on the corner, it literally shows the immediate neighborhood in a different way than I thought was being presented here. Because it sort of does allow that wraparound and allows that kind of view onto Vasiona Avenue, although it's obviously not identified that way in the residential design guidelines. So how are we defining the immediate neighborhood here?
Yes, thank you for the question. So staff does have an exhibit prepared. If Mr. Mullen could pull that up, and essentially it's going to show what staff did determine to be the immediate neighborhood in this case. And as mentioned previously, this is a very unique neighborhood in that, you know, there's commercial and residential across Capri, and the actual neighborhood itself seems to start Vasiona heading west. So the properties highlighted in red are what staff used for the immediate neighborhood. We did wrap along Vasiona Avenue to the west, but essentially, staff's determination ended right before the two properties that the applicant used for their immediate neighborhood definition. And that would be 589 and 594, I believe.
Are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Safdie, for that presentation. Quick question. I know the ADU is not subject to our review tonight, but can you tell us, if you know, how tall is the ADU?
Thank you for the question. I believe it's listed in the plans as roughly 20 feet, but if you give me a minute, I can confirm that.
And if you don't have it, I can ask the applicant as well, I imagine. Out of curiosity, then, part B to that question, would, even though it's on the same lot, would that be part of our analysis of the neighborhood incompatibility?
It starts understanding that yes, that does contribute to the neighborhood.
Okay. No, I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions of staff? I'm getting the same reverb. All right. If there are no other questions of staff, then we'll now open the public portion of the public hearing on this item and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. I have Gordon Wong and Kevin Yu. But please make sure you adjust the microphone as needed so that we can hear you. And you have five minutes, and since you're both speaking for the applicant, that's a total.
I'm the applicant, Gordon Wong, and the architect.
My name is Kevin Yu, and I am here as the project representative on behalf of the owner and GPW Architects. And we are a local firm residing in CDO Campbell and have been proudly serving the community for the past 16 years. Our intent is to design a home that not only blends in beautifully into the existing neighborhood, but also enhances the overall aesthetic and contribute to the long-term value in the area. We believe this project is a positive step forward and eagerly anticipate working with the town members and the neighbors to ensure it benefits the community as a whole. We have taken in consideration of the recommendation, and I would like to provide these findings on these slides. Okay. On the first slide, we have the front facade of the house facing towards Capri Drive, and this project is also intent to acquire three permits. We have zone change, grading permit, and the demolition of the existing single-family home for the new construction. Below, you see it's a directory of the professionals that have been working on this project. Next slide. This slide outlines compliance with residential design guidelines. To begin, the building is complying with the real setback requirements. Next, we have existing trees that were preserved for privacy screening and natural shades. In addition, this project proposed high-quality materials and craftsmanship. For example, we are providing three arches on both floors, solid wood doors, and decorated corbeels. Furthermore, this project is complying with the height, FAR, and the general plan. Next slide. We had taken thoughtful consideration of the community feedback and made few adjustments to the plans. On this slide, we have before and after elevations and sections showing these changes. On the elevations, we reduced the window size and flushed the wall of the master bedroom. This results in increased distance from building to property line as described on the sections. We also added a privacy planting to alleviate the direct line of sight into the neighboring property. Furthermore, the floor area is reduced from 3511 square feet to 3375 square feet. Next slide. And there, we have a map which outlines the neighboring properties within 400 feet radius. With comparison, this project is the third tallest and the fourth largest in terms of FAR. We hope we have addressed some of the concerns, and we're more than happy to work with everyone here to make this project work.
Any questions or comments, we're here to help out and understand what we need to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Stump, then. Commissioner Raspe?
One of the concerns that was brought up by a neighbor, I assume it's at 14333 Capri Drive, was that this house will block our view of the treetops to the north and will shadow our property. Can you briefly review the shadow study that's been completed? You did in your drawings, sheet G005, did a shadow study. It's pretty geometric, and if you could just give an idea of how the shadows affect the property at 14333 Capri Drive?
We'll bring that sheet on the screen. It's sheet G005. And we can probably focus on maybe the winter solstice. Little small and hard to see, but on the lower left-hand corner is probably the one that we need to look at. And winter solstice at 3:00 PM, I think the shadows are casted the other way towards actually Capri Street. I don't see too much effect there. 9:00 AM also, it's going to be casted towards the street and towards the 80, which is on our site.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Stump?
What about the final time period there?
You talk about the, which one, upper left?
Far right.
Far right. Far right is summer solstice 9:00 AM. The shadows will be casted towards the ADU on our site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Raspe?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I think you probably heard my question to staff. The height of the ADU, do you know off the top of your head?
Actually...
It should be about 20 feet.
20 feet. 20 feet, three inches.
Great. And a second question, if I may, Chair. We've heard from one neighbor in their response. I'm curious, can you describe your neighborhood outreach and any other responses you might have heard from other neighbors, please?
We had three neighborhood outreaches. We had one comment that came in recently. We were able to address that comment literally yesterday when we got it. We reduced a window, we recessed a wall to decrease any impact it has to the direct neighbor. We've also provided screening with a bush and a plant to avoid any visual intrusion.
Thank you. Are those incorporated into either your plans or your conditions of approval?
Correct. In the plans and the presentation, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner?
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. So, a couple of questions. First of all, did you do anything to reduce the bulk and the mass, which our town architect did address that, and of course, as you know, it is the largest house in the area?
We reduced quite a bit of it. We reduced the plate heights of both first and second floor. We also, we complied with seven of the nine comments. We didn't comply with one of them because complying with that one actually increased the size of the house. So we opted to go another direction, which actually reduced the square footage. And the final one, I think, was more of an arbitrary... What's that one? The last one was to avoid a cricket in the roof, and then we sent it back. So that's how that happened.
We actually tried multiple design scenarios, and by adding hip with the third-party consulting architect suggestion, it actually makes the house even taller. That's why we resolved back into the shared roof to keep everything minimal as possible.
So, could you tell me, how much in reduction in square feet did you accomplish? Because you're at 1,237. Your largest by far of 1,237 square feet of other homes in the area. So you're saying you redid. How much did you reduce that by?
I think the square footage was reduced about, including the window.
Yeah, so with the changes of the windows in the master bedroom, we actually reduced about 15 square feet. However, on the calculation, when I look into it, the stairs were actually double-counted, so the actual square footage in FAR is actually much more lower.
I see. Can I continue? So going over our architects', you know, suggestions for you, and you said you had responded to seven of them. However, number four, I was a little, you said, as it was, detail the windows to be more consistent with the proposed architectural style. And then there were a couple of options here, and what your response was softening the window trim color. So you didn't do any recessing on the windows, then? You only changed color on number four?
I believe we did a lot of research on the windows. Yeah, we did check the...
You did some recessing?
Yes, yes, we have.
Okay, because it...
You can't see it on elevation, but in our model, it does show. Yeah.
Okay, because the answer was just, you just changed the color there, so I was wondering about that one.
Oh, I see. Okay, I understand. We are trying to comply with the third-party architect's consideration. However, if it's suggested to be recessed, we will happily do that.
Yeah, okay. Great. Okay, and then one more. On number six, add trim at the bottom of the projecting bay. Oh, yeah, the rafter tails, that's what. Did you bring them around, or did you just only do them under the window and make them larger?
So we decided to eliminate the rafter tails of the second floor. I think this discussion was more about the supporting corbeels, which we have enhanced the size of it on the front of the entry and the garage.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sordi?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So just a couple of questions. So I guess I'm a little confused in the sense that it sounds like we got to pack it with the design. We saw that the letter came in relatively recently, and you made some changes to address the letter, but I don't think you summarized it in your presentation.
It's on the slide, slide three of our presentation.
So what I heard was reduced window sizes facing the neighbor. I heard recessed a wall. I'm interested to know how much you recessed the wall.
Correct.
And then you talked about screening. So if you could just summarize what you changed in the last couple of days.
So on the second floor, on the left side there, you see the top diagram has three windows, and the one on the bottom has two. The one that has three actually had a pop-out. We actually made it flush afterwards to recess it back in, to make a little more distance from the neighbor. And then the slides on the right shows a cross-section with the, there's a line of sight view. Pull this up. There we go. Here's the direct line of sight view. Here's the direct line of sight view. So this window was reduced, and then we added screen right here. You can see here is a line right here. This one is flush. So we reduced this window and made this smaller.
Okay, thank you. And then, so a wall was recessed inward?
Or it used to pop out, and we made it flush in the end, and that reduced the square footage.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so it was recessed by a foot or two, or can you say how much?
It should be about a foot.
About a foot? One foot, yeah.
Okay. And this was done to address the neighbor's concerns?
Correct, yes.
Did you meet with the neighbor, talk through it, or?
We got the letter from planning. We just met with the neighbor, and we executed as fast as we could before the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, that's it for now, I guess.
Any other questions? Commissioner Burnett?
A couple, if I might. According to the staff report, in terms of your outreach to the neighbors, there were one, two, three, four, five, where you put not applicable, no one was home, no one's home. No one was home, no one was home. So I guess the question is, did you make any effort subsequently to reach to these neighbors?
We did. Yes, we went out there, we got out there three times. And one of the times was when the story poles were up, so we kept trying.
And so, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, you were still unable to reach five of them? five of the neighbors?
Quite a, yes, that's true. We had several, we had four staff members go out, twice with you.
I appreciate that. And then, if I may?
Yeah, and on the property, our signs there, my contact is there, my office's number, and our website's on the site.
Good. So, you began your presentation saying that the home fits in the neighborhood, but the staff's concern is with the largest square footage, the largest FAR, although not by much, and the height. And what is your response to the staff on that?
My response is, quite a few of those homes were built in the 1940s. It's been quite some time. We do have quite a few properties that need to be rebuilt, I believe. And we are in a transient zoning area. Right across from our house on Capri Drive is the commercial office zoning. When we expand the map just a little further, we do notice that there's quite a few two-story homes. And on the lot that we're on, we're not, we have a pre-existing two-story. We're trying to match. We're trying to match the style. We see a lot of houses with tile roofs, a lot of Spanish stucco-style homes. So, we did walk the neighborhood, take a look at that. We are trying to also put enough variation on the facade so that there's insets, there's some kind of characteristic that ties it down. And I feel that we've reworked the design, both front, inside, outside, to try to make that happen, to try to put a good example of a new home in this area.
If I may, Chair. Can you say how many two-story homes were in the expanded neighborhood that you researched?
Yes, would you have to pull up Slide number four? Summarize that on the mic.
I'm going to need you to grab the microphone.
Okay, we're located here, Capri Drive, Vasiona, over here on Knowles Drive. So, actually, our number is actually lower than 25.7. This is correct? Okay, 25.7. On Knowles Drive, there's another one, the height is 26 feet, 24.6 is FAR. This one's 3,111. Over here on Knowles Drive is 30.2%. We have Vasiona down here, 30%. So, that's only a couple houses down. And here, we have 26.7. So, our immediate neighborhood is kind of, the way that we're chopped up is because we're in a transient spot. But there are quite a few two-story and large homes here.
Okay, thank you for those responses.
Commissioner Stumpf, I think you had your hand raised. No? Then, Commissioner Rasby?
Thank you, Chair. You indicated, I think, during your presentation, that at least with respect to one of the floors, you lowered your plate height from 10 feet to 9 feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is that the second floor?
First and second floor. Yeah, second floor.
So, is your first floor still 10 feet? Or how high, I'm asking, what's your plate height on floor one? And if it's 10 feet, is there a way to reduce that to nine?
First floor is 10 feet. We were taking consideration of reducing...
Well, we would like to keep the 10, because there's a lot of good things you can do with that in terms of windows and doors. One of the best things is when you do those light-divided, true light-divided windows, the options are far better with the header and the taller windows. So, if we could keep that, it'd be really good for the Spanish Mediterranean style. Now, if we reduce it to nine, then the windows won't be as high-end. And that's kind of the thing I noticed in a lot of good homes in Los Gatos. I always look at the good brands, Colby, true light divider windows. And we have two street-facing facades, so I think it would really enhance the look of the house in the neighborhood.
Okay, I appreciate that response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. So, I went around the neighborhood twice. On the other side of Knowles, yes, there are a few, very few larger homes. When you come down onto Capri, you go all the way down Capri to the end, or you go down to the middle of Capri and you turn right on Vasiona. I only saw, I did not see second-story homes. The only thing I did see were the taller ADU in the back, and then, a partial second story on the right-hand side of Vasiona there. So, that neighborhood, your home would be definitely stand out as quite a large structure, because there are no other two-story homes in that immediate neighborhood. I know you described on your, but it wasn't in that immediate neighborhood that you have these, a large home like that.
I understand what you're saying. Very difficult to say, because when I walked down Vasiona Avenue, 589 Vasiona is 27.5 feet high, and that's three houses down. On Knowles Drive, there's a house that's 27.3 feet high, and that is two houses down. But you got to walk down Vasiona, and that's where they show up. They're two stories. One more on Knowles Drive is 26 feet tall. That is an adjacent road, but it's quite close.
But that's on Knowles Drive?
Knowles, but we are also on Vasiona. And I see one, two, and Knowles is the back-to-back with Vasiona when I see it. I would be able to see it from Vasiona Drive, or Vasiona Avenue.
That's interesting, because my...
And I have it on the map, on the presentation. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. You'll have a chance after we listen to other public to come back and speak again.
Thank you.
All right. I have one speaker card for Michelle McCormick.
Good evening. I'm Michelle McCormick, and I am the neighbor at 14333 Capri Drive. And I appreciate the architects trying to make some adjustments. I just heard about it tonight. So, we never met with them. We had an opportunity to have some people come through very quickly a couple weeks ago, and then, just met them today. So, I had brought up the concerns to the homeowner, and also to the gentleman from the architecture firm when they swung by. And I think they're all the things that you've been talking about, the size of the building for our direct neighborhood. Yes, Knowles is down the road. It's on a main street. But you think about our neighborhood, you walk around there. I've been there for almost 40 years in that house. I'm in a historic house right next door. There were other little historic houses around, and may not feel like they're in great shape and need to be redone. But, you know, we're renovating our house. Everybody in that neighborhood is trying to keep their houses looking really nice. And this structure, I mean, it's beautiful. It's huge. It's, you know, gorgeous home. It just feels like out of place for the neighborhood. And I had thought, gosh, it's such a deep lot. It has that garage conversion, and then, even more space. And, you know, you could do a beautiful one-story home there, and not understanding why you'd tear down the old home, which was maybe not renovatable. But the old garage is the same vintage. It's a very old structure, and the two sitting next to each other, really close to each other, as you saw on the map, the home and the garage, just seemed out of place. Like, they're not going to match at all, if you're concerned about the look of the neighborhood. And I do appreciate, again, the architect and the homeowners thinking about, well, how could we make this be not intrusive on the rest of the neighborhood? So, I want to give them kudos for doing that, and immediately, after getting a response, thinking about how they could tweak it. But it is, feels kind of obtrusive. I'm also concerned, of course, about the huge development that's planned across the street, and don't want to have anything be like, oh, well, look, we already built this big building, so why not build a 13-story apartment building across the street? It changes the whole effect of that neighborhood. We were there when the old farmhouse was still there, before 85, and all of the little homes in that neighborhood. Having some of those quaint neighborhoods in Los Gatos really keep the character of the community. So, I appreciate you hearing me out and listening to the concerns, and hopefully, we can move forward and be agreeable to everything.
Thank you. Hank Tyte, let's see, does anybody have any questions for the speaker?
I'd like to.
You do? Okay, Mr. Burnett?
Do you mind coming back up for a quick question?
Sorry to call you back.
Can you come back up? Thank you.
My question to you is, with respect to the modifications that have been explained to you by the owner and architect, have those somewhat ameliorated your concerns, or?
Well, I just heard them now in the presentation. That's the first I've heard of them. So, changing the windows, that's a great thing, so they're not looking down on the property, and putting up some more vegetation screening, that's great. I do appreciate that. I haven't had a chance to see that design at all. I did look through all of the plans when they originally were put online, but I haven't seen this one.
So, you have reservations until you see more?
Yeah, I'd like to just look at that in detail. But again, I do appreciate them immediately trying to look at ways to change that. It's just, you know, it is still a large structure.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Paulson, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair. I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
All right. So, then, the applicant can come back if you would like. You have three more minutes. If there's anything else that you would like to discuss. Do you guys have any further questions for the applicant? Okay, then I will. Okay, go ahead and come back up, then. I think there might be a question for you. Commissioner Sordi?
Is it possible to put the site plan up? And there was one in the packet that actually showed the setbacks pretty well. Yeah, I'm thinking of another one that had a kind of a color coding on the setbacks on the front and side. Sorry if it's, there we go. If we can enhance that a little bit. Sorry to put through gymnastics here. So, my question is, it's kind of a bigger picture question. So, when you chose to plot the house, and backing up a little bit, what I did do is I kind of took my handy Google measurement, and I measured the distance of this house from all the houses in the neighborhood, and the proximity to the one at 14333, once you, in the post-development condition, is pretty close. I think you're actually right at the setback with the lower level, and then, you're five foot setback to the second level. And maybe it's a little different now with the recessing the wall. So, I believe you're right at the setback. And then, on the other side, if I'm reading this right, you've got a lot of room. I see a 10-foot setback from a property line, and then, a 15-foot setback, I guess, from the street. I'm just curious to know, because it doesn't look to me like the house is centered on the lot. And I don't know whether there was sort of a method to your design, or maybe you could walk us through that. Because I guess what I'm seeing here is a potential to maybe move it in the direction where you don't impact the one neighbor who's within 20 feet, because I think everybody else is in like 80 feet or more in the neighborhood. So, just a long-winded question.
Yeah, I understand the weight of the question, and also, the weight of the result in if we were to move the house, because the issue is, is the distance from the street of Vasiona to get the driveway to work. So, that's why the house ended up where it was, and also, the existing trees, and not impact the roots. The project was driven with other concerns, not just thinking about, just looking at the setback, because there's other things to make it work. And we felt that by abiding to the rear setback and insetting, the second floor would help some relief, but at the same time, retain the characteristic of the original house, because that's where the front door was originally facing Capri. So, we were trying to retain that, and retain the garage where it is, because of the, the driveway actually is located in the right spot. Yeah, but we want it here, because the corner's here. And if we were to put it here, the garage, it's very hard to explain on the paper. But we looked at it inside and out when we were checking the width of the garage, how to get two in there, and how to get the driveway in. Lot of moving pieces.
Maybe I'm not quite understanding it. So, you're saying shifting the house to the north would affect the location of the driveway coming off?
It would. Yes, yes.
By moving it closer to the intersection, or?
Laser pointer, that'd be helpful. I don't know what you mean by shifting it.
I'm just saying, it just looks to me like the driveway might get a little shorter. But it wouldn't necessarily move it east or west, would it?
The point is to be able to park a car on that driveway. That was the issue.
Okay, so it's the depth of the driveway?
Right, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. Any other questions? All right, no? Then, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to close the public portion of the public hearing. And I invite my commissioners to ask questions of staff, have any conversation. Is there anybody that has any questions with staff, or any comments? Mr. Burnett?
I can break the ice here. My concern is that although the height, FAR, and square footage are within the allowable limits, that we have to look at the residential guidelines to see if those comply within, given the limitations that are complied with. In other words, I think the RDG trumps the maximums. And the over, the comments made by the consulting architect, Mr. Cannon, that the property does not blend with the smaller homes in the neighborhood, that the height, bulk at the front and side are significantly greater than those of adjacent homes, that the architectural style is to be with sensitivity to the surrounding neighborhood, height and bulk at the front and the sides must be considered. So, my concern is that this house just isn't the house that complies with all those residential design guidelines requirements. And I look forward to comments from my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Commissioner Rasby?
Thank you, Chair. I will take the, apologies to my fellow commissioner, the opposite side of that discussion. So, this home, it's not in dispute that it complies with FAR, complies with height limitations. In fact, it's three feet lower than the maximum height they could have built, complies with setbacks, complies with lot coverage, and complies with parking. The ask is that, or the issue seems to be, that it's going to be the first two-story in the neighborhood. And we've had this discussion before, there's always going to be a first. But I think maybe a different way to think about it is, if we don't allow this two-story, are we then going to say that you can only build one stories in this neighborhood? And that seems to me to be a prohibitive limitation, given what properties and real estate costs in Los Gatos. And of course, we have a mandate to try to include our housing and inventory housing stock. It seems to me that, given that they are in the prescriptions, and the only violation seems to be that it doesn't fit the neighborhood, I think, again, this is probably one of those examples of a neighborhood that will likely change as time goes on, and somebody has to be first. So, generally speaking, those are my thoughts. Again, this is, unless we're going to require only one-story homes in this neighborhood, or require below-grade construction, which is expensive, I don't see an alternative to allowing the first two-story home to be built. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, thank you. So, my feelings are, I really agree with Commissioner Barnett. When you look at the design guidelines, I mean, you can go through, there's many numbers starting with 2.1 neighborhood patterns that this home does not fit in. And what Commissioner Rasby is saying that, well, okay, if we don't do this, then there's no two-story homes. I don't think that's what we're saying. I think we're saying, this is too large. You can't have a two-story home. You can have a one-and-a-half-story home. That would fit more with the neighborhood, and be more, you know, in line with the feeling of the neighborhood. The bulk and mass of this is, I think, way out of his scale, or even our staff recommended a denial of this project because of that. So, I don't think, we're not saying you can't have a two-story home. There are two-story homes in the area, but I think this one is way above. I mean, it's, what is it, 1,237 square feet, larger than, you know, larger than any other home in the area. than any other home in the area. So I think you can do homes, but I think this is just too large of a home. And I think the style is not congruent with the neighborhood as well.
Okay, any other comments?
I think this is a project that we're truly on the fence in some ways. I appreciate Commissioner Rasby's position on this as well. And I think it's got a lot of merit based on all the things that they do conform with. And I can definitely see both sides to this story, definitely. So I'm not sure even as I'm saying this, what direction I'm fully leaning. So I look forward to hearing a few more comments made.
All right. Commissioner Sordi?
Happy to make a few more comments. So, yeah, with respect to the two-story issue, I think I'm aligned pretty well with Commissioner Rasby. I think that you're dealing with a neighborhood with much older homes, completely different era of architecture. You're also dealing with a neighborhood that's really eclectic in terms of styles, lot sizes. You've kind of got a whole lot of different stuff going on out there. And there's not a uniform pattern or vision, even with respect to architectural style. So, you know, in the line of questioning I was following, it was a little bit more focused on the design guidelines and development standards, you know, not affecting any one person unfairly. And so I'm focused a lot on that immediate next-door neighbor. But with respect to the greater neighborhood, I'm not too hung up on having a two-story house. I'll just say that.
All right.
I'm not sure if that helps.
No, that helps. I'll add my own comments, because I agree. I see it both sides. And I think through many, many years, we've seen a lot of homes that do feel like they are at a point of transition, whether we're talking about a neighborhood that newer people are moving in, remodeling the homes, or, you know, going from a commercial zone to a residential zone. And one of the things we've consistently talked about during those types of meetings with a home at that kind of transition point is how you help that, the homeowners blend in with the overarching neighborhood. And one of the things that's consistently said when you are looking at a neighborhood or a zone that has predominantly single-story homes, but we are realistic, you're right, it's expensive to buy homes here. I think people should be able to have room for their families. So you're not opposed to having a second story. There's been a lot of discussions about how you make the second story a little bit less, less visible at the front vertical plane. And usually that's by setting it back from the front at a minimum of five feet, you know, having a lower plate height on the second story, doing things that just make that second floor more sensitive, less, I don't know if I'm blanking on the word. So I know that that's been a comment through the years that we've discussed a lot with neighborhoods in transitions. Because I am very much in agreement that I'm not opposed to this being a second story. My concern is, when you visually look at the compatibility of the neighborhood, how you have a second-story home blend in with the immediate neighborhood. So to me, a second story is fine. I also think the architectural styles through this neighborhood run the gamut. So I don't have a problem with the architectural style either. I think the main thing is that the bulk and mass at the sidewalk, I guess, is the way I'll say that. And I think that that could probably be resolved by making the second floor setback with a smaller floor plate. That would be my comments.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, I'm going to join in Chair's comments. I think there is, again, I voiced my opinion regarding two stories generally. And this home specifically, stylistically, I think it's a well-done home. But I think you're probably correct. There's probably a way to break up the front massing at least without altering too much the practical uses of the second floor of the building. So I would enjoy exploring that a little bit. Although I think as a commissioner, probably, it's not our job to redesign the building. I also want to just float out there. I think there are three considerations before us tonight, one of which is the demolition and the construction, but the zoning and the grading. And in my view, as long as we should touch on those, it seems to me that this house is kind of an anomaly already in that it is a residential-zoned office. So cleaning that up, I would move to recommend to town council that they approve that. And grading seems to me to be not overly problematic on this particular site. So with respect to those two issues.
I think you were cheating off my notes. So, yeah, the exact thing I was going to say is, how about we address the zoning change? Do any commissioners have any concerns or issues with this zoning change? Excellent. And then the same thing, the grading permit. Does anyone have any concerns about the grading permit? Okay, so great. Two checkmarks against those. So basically, now we're at the point with the architectural site, does anyone want to either venture a motion? Is there any further discussion?
Chair, let me proffer a solution then, based just on your discussion. And I think you and I, Commissioner Stump, and I'm not sure where, I think we're aligned, four of us, would be amenable to recommending to town council to approve a two-story structure on this lot, including these plans, subject to a revision of the front facade to break up the massing at least on the Capri side of the property. That would be, if I were to make a motion and recommendation, that would be it. So if you would want to take a straw vote among the commissioners to see if that works, that'd be great.
Any comments? Mr. Stump?
I was going to say I agree.
Yeah, Ms. Burnett?
Can you be more specific about what, how much mass, what would that look like? I mean, who's going to, we're not going to see it again, though. Who would be in charge of?
Could I, in the residential design guidelines, 3.3.2, there is a note about the second floor being setback a minimum of five feet. Would you be comfortable if you added that comment to your motion?
I think they need more direction from us.
That would be part of my motion.
Okay. Does that answer your question? If we included something that tied directly back to the residential guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Burnett?
I'll clarify that. I'm certainly okay with a two-story home. For me, the issue is not the setback, although that would help a lot, the front facade. But the overall mass, I think, is still a problem in relation to the neighborhood. And yes, neighborhoods transition, they have to. And that shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a restraint that certainly homes conform in size and mass to the existing. But I think here, it's out of scale. And so I'm not comfortable saying that just dealing with the facade is sufficient. Otherwise, I think I'm in agreement with everyone else.
Okay. Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, well, actually, I still do agree with Commissioner Barnett. Setting the second story back is maybe a step, but I still have the same concerns he does on this issue. So I wouldn't be supporting it.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Sordi?
One thing I kind of overlooked, since we're so focused on the structure, I did want to make sure that we address screenings, since it seems like the applicant has a pretty good reason to not move the house further to the north, as I kind of suggested. And I don't know that we have seen sufficient detail or whether we should just prescribe more specific detail associated with the screening on the south side to protect the neighbor's privacy. I think that I saw in the packet that there was like 34, 20, sorry, three 24-inch box trees in the front yard, new to be planted. And if we could at least match that on the side, so, you know, and I'm not an expert on landscape, but if we could have something that's, you know, robust and significant enough that we do address privacy issues on the south side, I would just want to make sure we get that in the motion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think we could direct them to work with staff on that specific item. Commissioner Rasby?
Just a point of mechanics. Mr. Safdie, do you need one motion for three recommendations? Since my suspicion is that commissioners are not going to be aligned on all three points, how would you like to see the recommendation to town council?
Thank you for the question. So I'd recommend following the findings. There's, and breaking it out into two pieces, the zone change and the ark and site application. Technically, the grading permit's tied into the ark and site application. And one other thing to note, that if we are going, or if the planning commission wants to go with the proposed changes that were shown in the slides, that we need to condition those. Staff has not received those updated plans.
Good. Chair, if you like, I can try, let's try the zoning motion first?
That would be great.
Then I move to recommend to town council that they, with respect to property located at 14331 Capri Drive, APN 406-32-004, Architecture and Site Application S-24043, and Zone Change Application Z-23005, that town council approve the request for a zone change from O Office to R18. And I can make all the required findings as set forth in our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stump?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Now, who wants to venture a motion on the second half of this application?
I can try again.
I appreciate you today.
I would move to recommend approval to town council with respect to the demolition of an existing single-family residence and the construction of a new single-family residence site improvements, including a grading permit to property located at 14331 Capri Drive, APN 406-32-004, Architecture and Site Application S-24043, and Zone Change Application Z-23005. I can make all required findings as set forth in our packet with the following further recommendations to town council. First, that with respect to the second floor, there'd be a five-foot setback incorporated as per our design guidelines, that there'd be on the south side of the building, a screening such that privacy is ensured between the adjoining property neighbors. The other conditions as set forth in tonight's discussion, which applicant put forth on the screen, but which were not necessarily included in our packet, that those would be included as part of our recommendation as well. I can make all required findings.
I want to ask a quick question of Mr. Safdie. As far as the screening goes, when we are doing something like this and prescribing it from up here, but we want to make sure that the screening is meeting the privacy needs of the neighbor, do you do we normally need to say something like that is approved by the neighbor also? Do you get something in writing? How do you typically go about that?
So I'll jump in. So I think here we have a little bit of time, because this is going to be a recommendation at council. So that will give the applicant's team time to prepare potentially any revisions they're going to propose to try to address the conditions that are being added in addition to the screening that's proposed. As I think the neighbor mentioned, it was the first time she's seen it, so she would like to have a chance to take a look at it. So I think there'll be some time for some back and forth there on that. So I think at this point, we're okay.
Okay, thank you. All right then. Is there any discussion about the motion? Mr. Burnett?
I thought the maker of the motion agreed with Commissioner Burnett with respect to a reference to the residential design guidelines. Maybe I misunderstood, but can you clarify?
Sure. I referenced in my motion, the second-story five-foot setbacks in accordance with the residential design guidelines. I believe that was the extent of my reference to them.
All right. Is there a second? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Sordi?
Just a clarifying question. So at least the way I read the plans, right now, there is a setback of five feet, I think, at least on the south side of the second story as compared to the first story. So I just wanted to clarify.
To clarify my motion, five-foot setback from the Capri side.
Oh, from the Capri side. Got it. Okay, not the south side, it's additional from the Capri side. Got it. Okay, thank you.
My motion's amended, please.
All right. Do we have a second? All right, Commissioner Sordi. Any further discussion? All right, I will call the question. All in favor? All right, opposed? All right, it passes four to two. Are there any appeal rights? I mean, this is a recommendation, so.
Thank you, Chair. No, because it's a recommendation, there are not appeal rights. It will next go to the town council sometime probably in August or September. And then we'll see what their action is at that point.
Okay. All right. Then that closes the public portion of our hearing. Are there any reports from the Director of Community Development?
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, last council meeting, the council heard the appeal of the denial of the planning commission decision on Cypress related to the garage. They directed staff to return with a resolution granting the appeal. So they have chosen to grant the appeal. And so we'll be going back to them, I think, in August as well for that resolution. Additionally, they also approved a tolling agreement with 101 Blossom Hill Road, which is one of the SB 330 projects, to give some time for the staff and the property owner, basically to wait for the outcome of the declatory relief that's been filed by the town. So we'll see where that lands. But, so they've agreed to toll the appeal period timeframe, and I believe one other item, but so that we can have the time to see what the resolution of that is.
Thank you. In addition to their time on the planning commission, commissioners serve on other committees. Do we have any other committee reports? It's been, what? Commissioner Burnett?
I do have a report from the Historic Preservation Committee. We had six items. We had one that was rescheduled, two that were a preliminary review of the project. One was denied. It was a window sliding door. One was approved with replacement windows approved. And then we are going to try and have a work plan for the Historic Preservation Committee to be presented to the town council. So that summarizes.
Very busy meeting. All right, are there any other commission matters? All right, if not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.